11th, 2023. The invocation will be provided by Westwood Baptist Church Associate Pastor Wayne Fennel, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Bobby Goins. Please stand. Indication first. Someone once told me, "God comes first."
Amen.
Thank you, Holy Father. Lord, we pray your blessing upon this county commission. Give them your godly wisdom. Bless their families and those that they love. And, Lord, we thank you for your blessings upon this nation, upon this state, and upon this county. Lord, we thank you for the children gathered here to praise your name in the singing of your glory. May you bless every child present and their proud parents. So, Father, we thank you for this community, for we are truly blessed. And once again, give wisdom and guidance and speak to each county commissioner as they make decisions concerning the welfare of this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
My, that sounded great. We need all of you to come every week so we can have that. We are blessed to have with us a group of young people that's going to entertain us with some good music here shortly. But the principal, Ruth Panny at Michigan Avenue, could you introduce? And I understand Ms. Rogers might be Teacher of the Year. Could you also?
Ms. Rogers is our Educator of the Year for Bradley County Schools, and we are so proud of her. One thing you will notice when our children sing is the excellence that she embodies, has passed down to our children. And we are just so grateful for this invitation to sing. Chairman Cry, Vice Chairman Winters, and the rest of our commission. I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for your continued support of Bradley County Schools. I'm at Michigan Avenue, and we are very proud of the work we do there. Three words define our school that we strive to live by. They are honor, integrity, and excellence. And as you see our children and the innocence in their voices and the heart with which they sing, I think you'll see just those three words: honor, integrity, excellence. So, thank you so much for having us today, and I hope you enjoy a couple of our songs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was outstanding. And you young men and women out there, you're going to be the future of Bradley County. We older people here would be gone one day, and it's up to you. So, thank you for visiting us. This might, it's not a record, as Commissioner Alford told me, but it's close to being a record attendance, and we sincerely appreciate all of you coming. We'll now go to the report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to add too, thank you, Michigan Avenue School. Thank you, the students, the teachers, and the parents that are here with us today. Three of my grandchildren have gone through Michigan Avenue School, so we know what a great school it is out there. Thank you for being here. Also, I want to welcome Chambers Leadership Cleveland back with us this afternoon, I guess. They're spending their day learning about city and county government, and we appreciate them being here today. Hopefully, this won't be a long meeting for you, but you can come back anytime you want to in the future if you want to see some real meetings, how they are normally. But thank you all for being here. Don't have anything to report today unless someone has a question for me.
Anyone have anything for the mayor?
If not, thank you, and I appreciate it.
I was remiss, and I would like to welcome Dr. Cash, Director of the Bradley County Schools. We'll now go to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you guys so much for coming and singing today. It was wonderful and beautiful, and you guys did an unbelievable job. And I too want to say, welcome to Leadership Cleveland. I went through that program probably, I don't know, what, four or five years ago, I think, and I had a better leader than you guys have. I know Jamie's taking you guys around, so I apologize about that. But now Jamie's a great guy, and thank you guys so much for being here today. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to all the commissioners who took the time last week to donate to the Empty Stocking Fund. This opportunity, as I spoke last week, allows for 1,500 Bradley County boys and girls to have a Christmas. Last week, Adam and I and a couple other, we were fortunate enough to be able to help raise money in kind of a two-hour window and was able to help this initiative while we came up short on our $40,000 goal. We had a lot of fun and were able to raise over $39,000 in two hours. On last Thursday, it was. Collectively, over the two weeks of the Empty Stocking Fund, over $230,000 was raised for those 1,500 boys and girls so that they may be able to have a Christmas. To me, this just shows that the heart of this community, shows the heart of this community and just how Jesus is working through this community. I do want to say thank you to you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Vice Chairman, for coming and being a part of the shenanigans that we had that day, and it was a lot of fun. Earlier today, Mr. Chairman, the EMS committee met, and it was a great committee meeting. I'm looking forward to some amazing things over the next year and getting better on some of the reporting. And I do, at this time every year, want to say thank you to our first responders, our sheriff's deputies, police officers, and firefighters for all the hard work you do in this community, especially during this Christmas time. And I know that these winter months and holiday times are hard on families, but we appreciate your service to this community. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to just thank you guys for coming out Michigan Avenue. I also have grandchildren. I have one in the 4th District. He goes to Taylor's. He's 11. She's not into singing, she's into basketball, but we appreciate you guys. That was wonderful, and that was joyful for me to hear good Christmas music and hot chocolate. I'll have that later. Other items, Mr. Chairman, we want to send out condolences to the family of Frankie McCarthy up in Charleston. He passed away Friday, and just condolences to that family. I had my oldest son yesterday, turned 38 years old, and the Christmas party last Wednesday at Main Street Cleveland was good. The food was great, and appreciate those folks for putting that on for us, and it was good. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, 6th District is doing well.
That's great. We'll now go to Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. 6th District is doing well. Thanks to all the kids that came out today. It takes a lot to stand up in front of people and do anything, so my hat's off to all y'all. Thanks for the hot chocolate. Thanks for the principal and the teachers and all the parents that came out to help them. And I do see Jamie Foxx, the legend, out here, too, so I want to say hey to Jamie, too. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on over to Commissioner Goins, please.
5th District's doing well, but I did enjoy the choir and good singing.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Michigan Avenue for being here. I appreciate you. That's mine in Scotts District, and I didn't know we had that good of singers in the 4th District. But we do. I appreciate y'all being here very much, and I asked some of them a while ago if they believed in Santa Claus, and they kind of looked at me, and I said, "Well, I do," because I hope you'll bring me something. So, I hope Christmas is good to you, and I hope Santa Claus is good to you. Thank you for being here.
That all, sir? Commissioner Gilbert, please.
I'd just like to echo the words of Mr. Thompson. Merry Christmas to all you young'uns. And that was absolutely beautiful. I really enjoyed that. I didn't just enjoy it, I needed it. Thanks.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you very much for being here today. To the Reedy family, mom, daughter, and granddaughter, thank you for your musical talents. Elderly, elder, Ms. Reedy is a musician in my church. I've seen her play this great music that she does in another setting, and she's always there and faithful doing that. Congratulations, Teacher of the Year. It's great being a great music teacher as you are, but to be Teacher of the Year, it says you're a great professional, and thank you for what you do. You sang about precious minutes, precious moments. These, say that again. Somewhere in my memory, you know, for every one of us sitting up here, we remember times that we were your exact age. We never thought we would be this age, and we, most of us never thought we'd be sitting up here as commissioners. But you are the future. You are why we're up here. We come here, and now we will see your faces and be reminded of what we do and why we do it. Thank you, Mom and Dad, for here. Grandparents, thank you to the SRO that's here visiting and taking good care of you and the principal that's here and the team. My son spent a little time with the SRO at Michigan Avenue and was one of his precious times and precious moments as one of the few men in that building to spend some time together. So, thank you for being here. Thank you, Bradley County Schools, for making this kind of thing happen. I've been to several of these ceremonies, these musical events, and one of the schools was filled Con Center and had the entire Con Center filled with 400, 500 students a little bit older than you. So, thank you for singing and bringing your talents to us. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll clarify, Mr. Winters, his son spent time with the SRO because he worked there, not because of any sort of legal issues or anything like that. So, thank you, Robbie Winters. We'll clear that up for you. But thank you, Dr. Panny, for bringing your team and your staff and your kids here. It's an awesome showcase for what our schools provide, the opportunities for our kids in music and drama, fine arts. There are so many choices that our students have, and we're so thankful for that. Dr. Cash, we're thankful for the opportunities that our kids have, the choices that our parents have, to be engaged and be a part of community schools and just, I think, what it showcases for our community in general. So, thank you guys for being here. You did awesome. This has been the best meeting I've had since I've been elected. Please stay here, because I don't think anybody's going to yell at us with you guys sitting in the first three rows. So, thank y'all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. One, far be it for me to disagree with Commissioner Thompson on anything, but Michigan Avenue is actually in the 3rd District. So, but they vote over there. A couple of things. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that our very own Lori Multry passed her exam, become a certified county financial officer, and this past Thursday, we went up to that famous city called Nashville, and not only Lori, but Camille McGill from the Bradley County Sheriff's Office, Malita Shaver from the Juvenile Department, and Angie Kayler from the Road Department, all went to Nashville to, quote unquote, walk across stage, minus the stage they just went across, and received their diplomas. Well done. It took them over a year or so, exams every month and stuff like that to get this certification. So, congratulations to all four of them. This puts Bradley County in a category, I think, other than the comptroller's office, who obviously they have a number of people with this certification. Bradley County now has these four who just received an additional four. That puts eight of our county employees who have this distinguished certification. So, well done to all of them. And last, to our musical entertainment, thank you guys so much. As it was just mentioned, it's been probably the best meeting we've had in quite some time, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just to reiterate everything that else has been said, and glad to see all you young folks here and the enthusiasm that y'all showed for your songs. Quite a show, I thought. Very good. And thank you for your cocoa. Look forward to drinking that soon. Other than that, District 2nd's doing good. We lost, we lost one of our top people in the Charleston area the other day, Frankie McCartney. Be a shame he was the leader in the Charleston area, so, but prayers to his family and so forth, and good to see all the young people here, and thank you.
That it? Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes, please.
Well, I must say, it's always terrible to go this far at the end of everybody else talking, because everybody's already said anything that can be said. So, I'm going to only say one word to you guys. Wow. That was amazing. So, I'll leave it at that. Just leave with wow.
Commissioner Beatty, please.
Yeah, it's real good music. It was a treat today to have this, and furthermore, in the district, we've had good news in our district. Ain't been no bad news from landfill this week.
Boy, the miracles keep rolling in here. Is that it, sir? We'll now go to the agenda items. Agenda item A, Commissioner Mike Hughes. Here, Ms.
Mr. Chairman, it's a resolution to rezone from forestry agricultural residential district to general commercial district property located at 5050 Water Level Highway East and identified by tax map 059 parcel 086.00 and tax map 059N Group A parcel 027.00. Believe I can't see. These can be seen on pages, doesn't have the page number, but it's there. But these can be seen, and it was voted unanimously to be recommended for the zoning change.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to Agenda Item B. That will also be by Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, it's a resolution to rezone from forestry agricultural residential district to high-density residential district property located at 1307 Old Alabama Road Southwest, identified by tax map 078 parcel 039. I believe that's going to be .03, and that can also be seen in your pages, the agenda. It was also passed unanimously for recommendation.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions on this? They're both going to be on the agenda, and you'll have a week to review them. We'll now go to communication from the audience. I will recognize anyone that would like to speak, and you'll give, I'll give you five minutes, and I'll wait here. We'll wait till the students depart.
Commissioner Cry, we have another engagement. This is our world tour day all through Bradley County, and so, thank you again, and thank you all for your kind words to our students. It means so much.
We thank you for coming, and bring your sealants back anytime, anytime. We, it might, oh, close to setting a record on attendance today.
Well, we have another tour in the spring, so we will work with Ms. Lori and set that up. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Let's see. Wait till they get on out. You have five minutes to discuss any issue, sir. Would you like to? Okay, come on up to the microphone. We'll need your, we'll need your name, if we need your address and phone number. Lori would get it. Don't have to give it publicly.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Stan Herter. I live in the old Parksville area, Mr. Thompson's district, Gilbert's district. And first, I want to thank you and commend you, because the county spent some money fixing a couple of hundred broken septic tanks. That is very important to preserve our Bradley County groundwater and drinking water and keep it safe. But I'm here on a bigger, much bigger problem potentially for Bradley County. Up in Copper Hill, Tennessee, the Cobb County Sewer Board is sending tons of poop up to the old copper mining facility. They call it Class B bio-salads, but it's really a liquid. When the trucks carrying tons of this stuff go through Duck Town or Copper Hill, it leaks brown sludge. It's untreated, or barely treated. It smells. When the wind blows north, Duck Town sinks. When it blows south, people cannot sit on the little patios of the restaurants in Hayesville and Copper Hill. And worse, the kids cannot go out to recess at the nearby elementary school. It sinks that much. And that's a problem for up there. The problem for Bradley County is that tons of poop during an eight-year contract will eventually leak into the Okoy River, because it's not lined like our waste dump here, not monitored. So, it will gradually, over the next couple of years, get into the river, go downstream to Parksville Lake. That makes it personal. In the summer, I take my kids, women, my visiting grandchildren, and I do a little fishing there. And then from Parksville Lake, Okoy goes to the Hiawassee. And Bradley County pumps a lot of its drinking water out of the Hiawassee. So, if this is allowed to continue, eventually, our utility company here will have to spend money on extra filtering and extra cleansing of the water before it's delivered to our home. So, it's like the people in, at the Cobb County Sewer Board are taxing us to pay to clean up their water. So, what I would request that you do to help is propose a resolution sent to the governor to ask him have the environmental department test the tons of poop in the old copper mine site to see what chemicals are actually in there. The non-treated, barely-treated chemicals have pathogens, viruses, germs, toxic chemicals, forever chemicals. So, first, we need to know what's there, because it's urban runoff and urban mess out of Marietta and Cobb County. And then, test the Okoy River for these chemicals from Copper Hill down to Parksville Lake, so that if they find stuff, we can stop it before it gets down to the Hiawassee River, before it drives up the cost of Bradley County drinking water. So, in summary, ask our Tennessee governor to place Tennessee citizens first to keep gorgeous poop gorgeous. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Very well said, uh, we can certainly address it from the Bradley County perspective on that river. Where the water comes from. I don't know how we can necessarily go to Polk County and address their government, but we can try. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, let me change something that, I want to go back to the, the agenda for a second. The Old Alabama was actually denied. We voted unanimously denied.
So it was a unanimous denial on Old Alabama Road?
We were honestly to, for my own sake of saying, we were going to approve it, however, we denied it because we're changing rezoning uh, rules to, that would fit it anyway and what's that?
Okay, let's keep that in mind. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the audience? And for those of you remaining, uh, we, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Ceremony, Saturday at twelve o'clock. I would like to invite every one of you who would like to come up to the cemetery. There will also be a ceremony, a meal fest, and doing a few more things off up there to prepare for that this morning also. Looks like the weather will be decent, warm, no, dry, maybe. Like to invite everyone to get off up there.
Thank you very much. I understand that your situation with the water, the mayor's office has corrected that, is that?
Did it in a wonderful condition.
That's great. Miracles do happen.
We do thank Mayor Davis.
Great.
And leaving you to it.
Great. This has to be a united effort, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, yes. Mr. Hey, sir, sir, sir.
No, 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 this gentleman just spoke. No, not Tom. The gentleman just spoke.
The other gentleman.
Thank, that was one of the most precise, appropriate presentations that we've had here. Thank you for that. What you said was detailed, what you said was where we can understand it. I hope that what we could do as a commission is have our county attorney take a look at what we can do to keep our, our, you, you hear us talk about our landfill a lot and the challenge we have here. We don't want that coming down here to ours. So that's, what you've asked for is something that could be done pretty easily and not be a, or a formal, it could be a formal resolution if this group decides to do that. But it could go to our county attorney through the mayor's office and take a look at what that will mean to us as it comes down to rivers as you've, you've identified. We want, we don't want that to happen and we agree with what, I think we agree with what you're saying. We want to protect those streams. Our grandkids go up there too and swim and ride boats and do all that stuff up there. So we would be uh, very much remiss not to at least take a look at this as a group here. Now, I'm going to suggest to the, to the chairman as well as commission that we take a look at this in, in legal, with, with what we can and can't do. We obviously can't go to Polk County and tell them what to do. We can't look at how that will affect us in time. So thank, thank you for your presentation.
Sadly, it's almost amusing. The state of Tennessee says, oh, that's a USA EPA problem, that's a TVA lake. So everybody's pointing fingers. So I mentioned state of Tennessee because we do have a environmental department that does go out and monitor sites, but there's been no desire yet. But Polk County is just a little old county and sometimes country places just don't get proper respect. You know, big old fancy Cobb County, but we've got a hundred and five thousand people. Think over half of our water comes out of the Hiawassee River. Gets cleaned, so it, it is a Bradley County problem. Not today, but a year from now if we don't do something. Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the next meeting is the voting session Monday, December the eighteenth at twelve PM here in the commission room. Upcoming events, the board of education, December the fourteenth at five thirty PM at the education central office. And with that, we are adjourned.